I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll call the meeting to order and next thing we can approve the agenda, any changes or additions?
Um, I would like to add to approve the hire of Shelley Rankin. Oh, can I address office for two dollars an hour?
Maybe we already wanted to put that at anywhere. Okay, should we just do it right away then?
Yeah. Yes.
E L L Y or?
Yeah.
What's the last name?
Rankin.
I didn't spell that.
R E E N K in the end, I think. Isn't it?
I thought it was just one.
Okay, it's one.
So she's going to drainage?
Yes.
Did you spell that last name?
R E N K E N.
It's not the term is we don't use clerk anymore, what's the term we use?
Office, office assistant?
What was that? Do you remember that, Don?
I can't remember what you.
I'm just gonna say drains then.
Um. Oh, correct, I forgot what.
Drainage manager or something.
No, I wasn't there. I can't remember either. We'll, we'll go with clerk for now.
So that's the only change?
Yeah.
Oh, I put that a bit like an I.
I will make the motion to accept the, or put that on the agenda and accept the agendas.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, man's motion carries. All right, we need to approve the minutes.
Look at last week's minutes. You both me, there's obviously the resolution for that, I didn't, I'll be honest, didn't read every last word of that, but other than that. Uh, we're gonna check fine, most can do approve.
I'll second.
And motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous motion carried. All right, general public concerns. No one else on Zoom but Randy. So I would say we're good. All right. So let's go ahead and go with um, the higher, we'll do that right away with uh, Shelley Rankin. Drainage clerk at twenty dollars an hour. And when would her start date be?
I make the motion to approve her.
Okay, so please.
I'll second.
Well, okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hey, unanimous. Okay, motion carries. All right. All right, organizational agenda. All right. Point chairperson and vice chair for calendar year twenty twenty four.
All right, I'll make motion to appoint Dave Lee for chairman. And then Eric Underbird for vice chair for the year twenty twenty four.
All right, awesome.
Do you guys wanna do the second or you want me to?
Well, unless there's a.
I'll second it so you don't have to. I don't want anybody being mad that Eric had the second. Vice chair. I just had to be a smart aleck this morning.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any other discussion then? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. So Dave, you get to take over now?
I do?
You do.
I thought you get to run it all.
No, I think it's a done deal.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Okay, approved reading operation.
Tell you thank you, Sandy.
Thanks, Andy.
For your work. I, I know it's not. Much different, other than your phone never seems to not ring because someone's calling to find out what, why, outcome, so.
And you get to deal with the weather.
It's, it's, it was. I don't remember ever having to worry about that.
Uh, so it's always a controversial thing.
Yeah, so. There you go, Dave. And I, and I wanna thank you, Dave, for taking over when I had to, had to zoom those um, wheels. So I appreciate that. Teamwork.
We're all the one.
Yeah.
We'll move desk after the meeting.
Okay.
All right, uh, point. Operations to be conducted by Roberts Rule of Order, which is what we have been doing, but. Make it official. Uh, motion to approve meetings conducted by Roberts Rules of Order.
I will second that.
Right, I have a book in here, so.
Yeah, I sleep with it on by, by my nights review.
Well, those of us who were named, we got to do that quite often. He was pretty particular on. The right way, or we aren't doing it.
See, I was in F H A, so we. Future homemaker back way back when, when they had Future Homemakers of America.
Oh, I, I wonder if they still do that in school.
Probably not.
I don't have that anymore, I doubt it.
Yeah, it's kind of sad that they don't do that because.
It made you work.
The generation that lost how to take care of a home.
I know, exactly, yeah.
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 Some of them don't even know how to cook or clean.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't get told, told or shown much if, unless their mom's at home.
Oh.
Okay.
We better vote on Robert Tools order.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Better follow those rules. That's right, we better at least vote on what we vote. Well, we know we missed the, the homemaker health thing or whatever from back in the day. Family organizational, we may put that as a reservation to bring that back.
Yeah.
Okay, set regular board of supervisor meeting dates. That would be listed on the agenda, correct?
Yes, yes.
And I was reading that, looked it up, that's because of the holidays, we moved to Tuesday.
Yep, and those, I, I love. This is really nice to have.
Yeah.
You did a really good job on this, thank you, Trish, that really helped.
And the dates are in the back too.
So, I didn't say. And I just saw it when you said that, I'm like.
I just wanted to prove it, I can mind read accordingly too.
Yep, so we can put that on the front. It shows everything. That's a great, I love this.
Yes.
So I'm gonna make that motion to accept the regular board supervisors meetings and dates.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oh, carried.
Okay. Did I miss that part about? Board act, board supervisor, not?
Uh, she took that off. Look at this one.
Okay.
Just the big one.
Yes. That was another thing that they had up there, that was cool. And it was a very good idea.
Okay. Through official Humboldt County courthouse hours and legal holidays. If I had a chance to look through them.
Yep.
Yes.
That's the legal holidays and courthouse closings, correct?
Correct, right, and our hours are eight AM to four thirty PM, Monday through Friday.
All offices will be open them.
Those hours, correct, all offices.
All offices.
So, I guess my question is, is we've had times when, and I'm just using Linda where she can, since their entire office is going. On Wednesday and Thursday to Cedar Rapids for training. When we do that. They posted, posted and that is trying to be put out in public. Several days before, so we don't end up making somebody mad that comes to pay.
I think we need to put those.
Question on that. For a closure of our office, we have no authority over that office, unfortunately, so they really don't need our approval to close. Right?
It's a courtesy.
It's a cur- more of a courtesy than anything.
But this is.
Courtesy is what Bruce.
Public is the.
Trying to be.
And being informed and so.
So I mean, we can't say that they have to have our approval because they don't.
Right, no.
But they.
It would be a courtesy for them to come in.
It would be a courtesy, I would think they would at least know at least two days in advance if they have training or something like that.
More than that.
You know, I, I know, like, but I'm just saying they should at least, and I think it needs to be put on the website, if there's gonna be a. It needs to be put on the website, it needs to be posted out on the front, um. Thank you. Yep, I think that's what, I would think that each office should be able to do that.
Yeah, and I, I believe they do, I mean, I think the assessors, they are like, normally quite a ways ahead. Um, is this? Holiday closing schedule posted on the website?
I don't believe this.
Can it be? I think that would be helpful for anybody that looks at the website because sometimes they may be confused like coming up President's Day, okay? That's an official national holiday. Just so they know.
Things like that. Grammar's trucking and see that.
You got your holiday schedule.
Yep.
Um, perfect.
But I just think that if we're gonna close an office for whatever reason, other than a holiday, we should post it on the website and. Can you make sure that all the departments know that that would be a nice courtesy to do? What they would go. And then also put it on the front door. Is that good of everybody?
Yep, plan. Courtesy.
Okay, I will make that a motion to approve the official. Um, county courthouse and legal holidays.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All favorite?
Aye.
All carried. Through Humboldt County Employee Business Travel Reinvestment for mileage in food and lodging and business meetings. Federal standard mileage rate is sixty seven cents per mile. Worse. Sixty now?
Sixty.
Yep.
Currently sixty and seventy for.
Food.
How much?
Seventy.
Indeed.
Seventy, seven zero for.
Per day for food. And that's um, with, that includes tip.
This is basically seventy dollars per day.
Sure, per day.
With receipt.
Yeah, with receipts. I don't know, I think not just receipts, but with um. My mind just went blank.
Well.
Man, my mind just went blank right there, was like.
Well, I want to leave it at sixty cents, you wanna move it up to sixty seven, it's, I don't think we should move it to sixty seven. Potentially. Fifty two. The thought.
Now, this is what other counties have done, and this is kind of what we've done with the rolling hills. Um, what, they've always, they did it um, so many cents below. The federal, because that way we don't have to vote on it every time, it's just always so many cents below.
Oh, I see, it is automatic.
Because it's something about, has something to do with, if they would lower it or something like that, then.
You got a little leave there.
Yeah, we've got a, yeah.
What do you? Is it a motion that that way, to remain a certain percent?
So many cents, cents below.
I chance below federal. I would make that motion, if, if that, I'm not, I don't know, Trish will probably check into this next year. Um, if we don't, still have to approve it every year.
I'm sure you would.
I'm sure you do, but I would, so. We can find that out, I would set it, make the motion to set it at sixty two cents in pending.
You'd, you'd wanna do it so many cents below.
Five cents below federal, if that, we can make that work, five cents below federal, would you put it at sixty two?
I'll second.
About the, the uh.
Food.
Food.
Well, it's probably on up more than.
The gas, yeah.
Yeah, actually, the restaurants are up more than anything.
But for the most part, I mean.
They usually feed you breakfast or something and.
You just want food.
Just the food.
Right, take, scratch lodging out of that. Lodging.
Paid for.
You can't find a room that's.
Right.
Hundred and a half.
Yeah, if you do.
Yeah. Yeah, because we wouldn't wanna do lodging, because that's just, we always cover lodging a hundred percent.
Yes, um. Can I add to my motion from the food, I would bump food per day, per DM up to seventy five.
Seventy five?
Along with the five cents under federal for mileage at sixty two for this time period.
It gives us a little bit of.
I'll second Eric's motion.
Okay, we have a motion for set the food rate for seventy five dollars a day. No alcohol.
I seconded.
Second on it, all, any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Okay, moving on, through official newspapers for twenty twenty four.
I didn't make a motion to it. Here's a Humboldt Independent, as a newspaper.
I'll second that.
When we have a discussion. All there.
Aye.
Okay, through Board of Supervisory Committee Appointments for other county appointments.
I looked through it, and the only thing that I think we need to change is we agreed to always have the chair and the vice chair be on the Safety and Securities. Committee, so that would go to Lee and Underbird.
And that is what particularly Sandy.
It's the, it's the um.
Meeting with.
Meeting with Ben for safety and security.
EMA.
Yeah.
Share.
Thanks, you're.
Yeah, well, no, we meet month, well.
Ever, just about every other.
Almost every, yeah, we were doing it every month to start with. And then um, we went to every other because we just didn't. Can't remember when the next one's gonna, wasn't it gonna be sometime in January though?
Uh, I think the next one is February.
Is it February? Okay, because it's the first, whatever the month is, it's the first Monday.
And basically within one.
Or not Monday, the first um.
Safety is the sixth of February.
Yeah.
Give me right down with your calendar.
Yeah, it's the, it's the, always the first Tuesday, very much.
What time?
Eight thirty.
Thirty up here.
Here at the court, here in the.
That's a conflict for me, first Tuesday? Okay, first, okay.
First Tuesday.
First Tuesday, it's the sixth. Oh, he dokey. First Tuesday. That's not a guy, but.
And the reason I think we decided to do that was because there was just some continuity, there was always one person on it. Yeah.
The vice would be.
Cause I think it started with you, when you were the chair.
What happened last year during.
Yeah.
So.
Like you kind of lost.
Yeah.
Well, the only one that I have an issue with, and I'm not trying to get off the board, the ministerial association, they meet. Uh, on Wednesday at noon. And I'm not usually in town and, and to be honest, I'm not throwing ministers under the bus. We haven't met for a couple of months because, well. The uh, Methodist ministers left and, and we only have like two ministers that are. And the congregational church, she, she left too, so.
Oh, she did?
Yes, she retired.
I didn't know that.
I think that she did, and so all we have is the two. Pastor Aaron and Pastor Katie up, but so they haven't been meeting.
Okay.
So we need to.
I can take that one on.
Well, I'm just saying, it's at noon and I usually call. Yeah, it's a real pain. When I was going through town all the time, if I worked out, I'd.
Yeah.
Uh, pull in there and we'd meet and.
Right.
Other than that.
Off the dust.
Yep, if you're okay with that.
If you'll, I don't have a problem and.
No, that's fine, thank you, but I got a question for Drew.
What?
So is that Humboldt County Ministerial? Isn't it supposed to be all of the clergy people from the county?
Anybody that's, that's willing and wanting to be on that. I would say that uh, Pastor Katie is the contact, she's the chair for, or she was last year, I don't know. Aaron was the year before, means there's only two.
It just doesn't, they're not getting good participation that's on the clergy, are they?
No.
Well, you know, you gotta remember, a clergy is one phone call away from on their way to Rochester, Iowa City.
Right, right.
The meeting is scheduled for today at noon, and somebody calls, somebody just had a heart attack, well, they gotta take off. It's difficult for them. And usually Kyle comes, um, the school board, um. Comes, somebody from the school board to, to deal with what they're doing at the school. I would tell them what's going on up here in case they haven't heard, and so everybody would, I mean, half hour, forty five minutes and it's done. So it's a good meeting, but we just have had a hard time getting.
Sounds like it.
Which is.
Well, that was my question. Maybe Sandy can get more people interested.
I'm not guaranteeing anything from that, but hey, I.
Well, she accepted that, I'm scratching.
I would do, I mean, that's not a problem, Mike.
All right.
I could do that, you're welcome.
Grab that one.
And there's two Edmills on there, I wasn't sure, the Edmo Humboldt County Advisory Edmo, and then down below, we have.
Yeah.
Upper Des Moines. Opportunity, and I'm on both, but I just.
Is there a difference between those?
I don't know. I don't think so.
Like you said.
I'm on the finance. For the Edmo, so we meet on second Tuesday or at all.
Also, there even different day meetings.
Yeah.
Should we just put one?
I would just, I mean, Edmo is Edmo to me.
Okay. So, remove the Humboldt County? Or, or remove the, the Edmo one for twenty one? Okay.
Yeah.
The Humboldt County Advisory.
Okay. Okay, so remove the up, the, uh, just the regular, just plain Edmo one, okay.
Sorry.
We have two.
No, I'm glad you did, no.
That makes sense.
It does, yeah.
Okay.
The only one I did is the landfill on there, Rick?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
I'm still, I'm a, I'm an alternate now instead of the.
And so am I not on that anymore?
The Humboldt County, you're on the Humboldt County one.
Okay.
But the regional one in Des Moines, in Fort Dodge.
Okay.
I'm an alternate.
All right.
Who's?
Uh, the city, old.
Okay.
Aquaman, he's uh.
So was that other one on here that you're talking about, the regional?
You know, it's about central Iowa regional landfill, I'm actually considered.
Oh, there's that one.
I went from being a member to an alternate.
Okay.
I got the boot.
And are you, are you upset about that?
A little.
Oh.
A little Fort Dodge one, yeah. Well, it was, it was a rule about, about um. Census, population drop below ten thousand. You could only have one member.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, it was a state.
I remember that now. And we, we were like eight members below, eight numbers below ten thousand, so one of us.
So one from two to one. Basically, one from two represented.
Got you, now I see.
What I didn't like about it so much is, basically Webster County runs the thing now.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Same with Des Moines.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good.
Get more votes.
They got more voters.
It's here in the supervisor room. Uh, Region Five has Matt. You got an alternative is reimered. Uh, down there, they list myself as supervisor and Kyle Bilsel, the EMA. As alternate.
Alternate.
Bruce is not on that unless he wants, unless we'll leave him as an alternate. I bet if we took him off, it wouldn't hurt his feelings.
Kyle's filling the role.
Which one's out on the, the?
That region.
Region Five has Matt. Region Five has Matt. Representing the county down at the meetings is myself, and then Kyle is alternate.
Okay. All right, fell in there quick too.
Yeah.
And you are still on Central Iowa Juvenile Detention, Dave? As the alternate?
Yep.
Anybody else have any changes? I'd make a motion to accept those with the changes we made.
I'll second that.
That would be for the county. Supervisors Committee assignments, appointments.
Correct.
Any other discussion on them? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, other appointments. Conservation Board. We got four on. Five wanted to be reappointed.
I have a problem with the one that's being reappointed. That's my opinion.
He's one of, oh, it's just monster trouble over there.
Has um. Has he? Asked if he'd be reappointed?
Yes, he wouldn't be reappointed with it.
Yeah. I have no problem with them, I think.
I think that board in general was probably one of our better service boards in the county. Having been on as you folks, a lot of other miscellaneous. That seems to be one of the better boards, one of the better departments, so. I agree with Sandy.
I'm gonna make that motion to um, accept the Conservation Board as printed.
I'll second that. With the first one being reappointed?
Yes, with Tate Saturn being reappointed.
Any other discussion?
Well, all I know is by your one, one time, something happens over there, I'm coming back around and have him removed, that's my opinion. So, I'll leave it, leave it at that.
Okay.
Okay, do a move and do all four at the same time?
I'd rather do one at a time, and that way if we have any issues, we can.
On the boards, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, Conservation Board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All.
Nay, or me?
Okay, Public Health Board.
I'm assuming all them have been contacted and.
No one's term expires.
No, they expire.
You're the only one here staying on that.
Yeah, you got appointed. Motion that uh, we maintain the Public Health Board as printed.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Planning and zoning board.
I'll make a motion to approve the current members.
I'll second that.
Uh, do we need one more on there?
Yes, Randy's working on that.
Okay.
To replace Ben.
Ben is what it says, he's an advisor, but.
Due to fact, he does.
And that's a requirement, but.
Yep.
Okay. The motion on that one.
I'll make a motion to accept, says Bernie.
I'll second that.
With one physician open.
Correct.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All carried. Veterans Affairs. What do you know about that, Dave? We're all on, hopefully the, thanks to Secondary Road, the Veterans Affairs is now upstairs on the third floor.
Excellent. After that, moved up there last week.
So everything looks good.
Everything's good on that thing.
Motion to maintain the three folks on the Veterans Affairs Board.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I doubt how long I've been on that boards. Long time, I'm button. Early eighties.
A long time.
How many years?
Well, it was early eighties, we got four and ten pound, how early? Forty or just under.
Um it's early eighties, eighty three, four.
I got married in eighty nine. Our forty fourth anniversary is coming up. It is.
Point the following members to the eminent domain board to serve members of the compensation. Compensation Commission as per chapter six. B dash four point four. Twenty eighteen Code of Iowa.
This uh. Everybody listed here?
Yes.
Agricultural. We've got Bertie, Tom Huntermark. Enstrom. Peterson. Hanselman. It's Grant.
Yeah. Uh they don't meet often, but when you need it. If they need to meet, yeah. I have a question to the Chris. By any chance, there any reason that no one listed here? Would not serve. Passed away, moved away. Your knowledge?
For the entire list?
Yeah, for the entire list, because that, this whole list is the eminent domain board.
Right.
Right.
Well.
Make sure there wasn't.
Yeah.
Okay, well, barring something we aren't. Aware of, I make a motion that we approve the eminent domain board with its uh sectors.
As noted.
As noted in printed.
As agriculture, property, town property, real estate. For all them.
Yep, for the knowledge, property values, and county personnel policy committee.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay, point weed commission for twenty twenty four.
Eric, are you willing to serve again as the weed condition?
I have my credentials uh bucking for raised. Let's say that you give me fifty percent of what I'm currently at, so that would be. Dave's even more, he's even more generous. Yeah, it does take a bit of time, but thankfully still work with Russian weed control. And uh we've been able to put together and maintain a pretty good effective, you know.
Right.
Control uh. Double eradication, but our control is definitely improved. Yes.
Well, I'll make that motion then. To appoint Eric Underver as weed commissioner for twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
All in favor? Both carry. Point Medical Examiner, Dr. Benjamin Paul.
Obviously, he's willing and able. Motion to appoint the Medical Examiner, Dr. Benjamin Paul for this twenty twenty four.
I would second that and I'd also maybe. Put the invitation out if he wants to, has any issues that he'd. Like to bring for, he could get on an agenda to. Come and tell us that he's got training. Because that was the thing last time that they're always have training and. So we make sure that our, the rest of the crew that helps him is up to speed, so.
Yep. You're right.
Give them an opportunity to at least. Tell us what they need.
All in favor? All carry. Okay, point EMA Director for twenty twenty four, Kyle Bilsel.
Well, I would certainly, yeah. Appoint, but I questioned that this never showed up on appointments at the beginning of the year. EMA has a separate board. And obviously there, everything is good with EMA. Where that came from. They have different county, they have different protocol, I don't know, but being on that board. It's it's distinct board, so I mean, there's no reason not to appoint him, obviously, and I'd make a motion that we do appoint him. I'm just curious how it can go it up in front of the board of supervisors, because we don't have the jurisdiction. But certainly make a motion to appoint him.
Officially. Kyle Bussel is the EMA Director. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, Veterans Affairs Director for twenty twenty four. Wilson.
He willing, able, doing it?
He's starting to catch on a little bit, uh. Lot of work, lot of training for the first year. But he seems to be catching on and getting it done. He's been sick quite a bit this year, but he's getting the job done, so.
So your board's good with that, then?
Yeah.
All right, I'll make that motion to appoint Wilson.
I'll second.
All in favor? Uh do we wanna? Be a nine o'clock, do we wanna move on to? Maybe.
It's here.
Good timing. Okay.
She was supposed to, the last page, yeah, the last page.
That's for the solo section.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you good to stick early in this morning?
Danny.
Are you good on Monday or Tuesday morning for solo?
Oh, absolutely.
Well, your choice, you get the standard.
Humboldt County Housing Development.
You can come up to the chairs and that way you can be on camera and.
Super enjoyable.
I told you I was gonna make you nervous.
It's not my forte by any means, but you must meeting, this is what happens, so. Yeah, so those who don't know, I'm Amy Donahue. I am a member of the Humboldt County Housing Development Corporation. And I am just here this morning to request our twenty twenty four funding, but um as you guys know, we've had a partnership with. The supervisors along with the City of Humboldt, um you know, being an intricate part of, you know, the. Financial support is needed by you guys for our housing board. I'm a member along with a volunteer member along with um Boot Bronken, Paul Bakleman, Dave Lee, Dave Dodgen. Clifton Calath, Liz O'Connor, Rick Peterson, Cheryl Reed, Don, Mel Scow, Kurt Little C. Steve Larson and Brittany Dickey. Um we use this financial assistance from both the city and the county. For funds, we conduct engineering studies, uh use these matching funds for federal grants, low interest loans. Also professional services we use and then conduct the housing, obviously, needs and assessments um as needed. Most importantly, this past year for twenty twenty three, um as some of you are aware, we assisted or working with. With the cities of Livermore and Gilmore City for the construction of their new homes for Iowa Home that are. Close to being completed there, which should, again, goes to the goal of helping with the housing needs in in our county.
How many were there?
Um there's one house in each of the, each of the towns, yeah, okay.
Built by the prisons.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Newton, yep, okay, yep, so then, of course, they're, that's in working with their city councils. I mean, they recognize the need for the housing, not only in the cities. Here, but also in the countywide, the need there.
Yeah, that's really good.
Yeah.
It's with some training also, so when they get released.
Absolutely, yep, so today, um I'm here to request the seventy five hundred dollars in annual support from. The county for this cut, this year of twenty twenty four.
Well, that, within the same law from last year.
I would assume so.
Think it is.
Any questions for me?
See, that wasn't so bad.
Pretty darn good.
Speech one on one and you made it through, you just give him a big sigh.
That was pretty darn good synopsis.
Um I'm a London at Bay Iowa.
You name any pie graphs for us?
No pie graphs, so I'm better off with a one on one.
The Texans say he was.
I survived.
Well, thankfully you showed up after you talked to Bruce prior to the.
Well, I think everybody at the time was church.
Yeah.
And I said, I saw somebody's name on the agenda. I know, I'm nervous.
You did a great job.
Yep.
For coming.
Yep, absolutely.
We appreciate it, but.
We do.
You guys very much to take a lot of.
There's obviously a need, it doesn't take much to live around town to realize.
And spending seventy five hundred dollars on that is. Well.
Yeah.
Some of these other communities, well, that's what Gilmore City.
I hope so, yeah.
Yeah, when it, it's nice, it's Humboldt County and, you know, we talk, there's here and there's there and. And it's, it's.
Yeah.
You know, to work with you folks if, if need be in their communities.
Yeah, and I hope they get that one sale under their belt, that cluster and maybe stamp into a second one and a third one down the road.
So is it remodeling?
It's built, so the towns themselves are required to do pre-site. Um inspections, we have that lot ready, the basement poured. Um and it's, it is the house alone, so then the cities themselves can decide if they want to add a garage structure onto the property or not.
Okay.
So it's. For affordable housing.
So how, where are they at and the? Are they done?
Well, it looks pretty much done, they're pretty much done. I don't know what their garage situation is there, there isn't one right now, but I don't know if they elected. Gilmore City, I think they put the foundation in for garage, they just didn't build it. Trying to keep the initial cost down so people can buy them and add their garage later. Yeah, that's the thing, Livermore's stock, they didn't even do the foundation, so, but the house appears to be pretty well. Yes.
Good.
I think maybe last meeting we had to talk about flooring.
Correct.
Gilmore City didn't put the flooring in because they thought they'd wait till the customer, you'll see what they want.
People had bought it.
Probably a good idea.
Put it in. I hope that this goes well for countywide, because a lot of these smaller towns could use some.
And it's tax revenue, you know, versus.
Yeah, so you get some people. Build their population up at least a little.
Correct.
Livermore said they had a lot of interest in the house, so.
Good. Good. I think it's a good idea to win on the floor, because that's what we got in our house when it was kind of partially in, that was nice being able to pick our own floor.
Yeah.
Well, that's good stuff.
Yeah.
I agree with Bruce, with seventy five hundred is pretty reasonable investment on the county's end.
First of all. Well, thank you for your time.
Should we move back to where we was at?
Yes.
This is just one of the annual resolutions that we're doing.
On the market.
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution twenty twenty four dash. Oh, one dash oh one farm to market construction projects, second.
Any discussion? Favor? Resolution twenty twenty four oh one dash two. Authorized County Engineer to close Humboldt County secondary roads as necessary for construction or emergency closure.
I'll make that motion to accept that resolution twenty twenty four dash oh two dash or oh one dash oh two, yeah, as printed.
I would second that, and I think, didn't we add last year, Ben uh? Tried to give them a heads up that. They were doing some construction on a road so that they knew. Oh, couple weeks in advance, so they didn't.
Yes, yep.
Have a meltdown in a, in a small town, so. He does a good job for them.
Yeah, he does do it really good. We're very fortunate.
Okay. Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All carry. Resolution twenty twenty four oh one dash oh three, construction evaluation result, resolution.
Well, that would be. Our favorite thing for the master matri, master matri. And. That's all there is, there was some talk.
A little chatter.
Chatter of the state reviewing that. Obviously, as the old saying goes, don't hold your breath.
Right, I was just gonna say it's.
We're, we're stuck with it.
Yeah.
That's what we work under.
And much we can do about it.
Yeah, so having said all that. Make a motion that we adopt the resolution twenty twenty four dash oh one dash oh three, construction evaluation resolution.
All second.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All carry. Adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash oh one oh four, authorization county auditor to issue warrants.
When it's just for the things that are. Stated right, correct, Chris?
Yeah.
Yes, you can, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All carry.
You know, when you take over chair first, to get through the first day. All the reading and.
I know.
Biggest help there is.
It is.
Adopt resolution twenty twenty four oh one oh five, naming depositories.
I mean, this is falls on what you do, is everything good with this?
Yeah, this is from the Treasurer's Office and. That's the maximum. Deposit that they would allow. But that this would allow in these accounts. And where they're located and which, it's also the Treasurer than the Recorder and the Sheriff's Office.
But when it says max, says matching deposit of this resolution, which states the numbers. Is that uh? Let's see.
Is that secured, like if the I see, if that's kind of. Quite a bit.
Well, is that how much it can have in their total? For deposit, or what does that mean?
Total completely.
Total completely, how much they can have in that account?
I believe so. And maximum deposit in this resolution.
Yeah, yeah.
I think I've looked into this before, because a year ago I had that question, and I think. Governmental funds are covered. Above the two hundred thousand dollar maximum, isn't it twenty thousand?
Yeah, I thought we talked about, was it last year that we?
Yes.
Wasn't the reason we changed one?
Yeah.
Well, that was due to a. Problem we are having with.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Payroll to a different thing.
You're right.
Right, you're having so much trouble with software.
Right. And after we switched, then they got.
Then they come and fix the problem.
Yeah.
But before they want to fix the problem.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll make that motion to accept. Um the resolution twenty twenty four dash oh one dash oh five, naming the depositories.
I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? All favor, apparently this vote on the resolution was kicked a roll call.
I see that.
Why didn't the others?
I wondered the same.
This is the form that printed off from the Treasurer's Office.
So they all should have been roll call.
Not necessarily, only if there's something contentious. Or what discrepancy, discrepancy is when you do a roll call. Except for this. Turned it out that way.
Okay.
And I would say it's probably because money is involved. They wanna have.
Yeah.
With every person.
Okay, Eric, I, Rick.
Hi.
Ruth.
Hi.
Sandy.
Hi.
Also, I.
I'm gonna check these, so if you guys ever check my work, make sure that you know I. That I.
Adopt resolution twenty twenty four oh one, racial six, precinct official compensation.
This is what, excuse me, we're currently paying the precinct officials. And. According to other auditors, it looks to be in line. A little higher than some.
Well, it's not lower, I mean, we did bump this up over the past year or two. Reasonable.
It's a lot of work.
Yes, it is a long day, and it's good that we've had some really good folks that'll. Step up to the plate when Chris asks.
Well, the other side is, is if anybody thinks that's too much money, they can contact you and. Do the legwork to get in this position and see how long that eight hour, ten hour day is. And then they would probably figure that's well worth the money.
General election is very busy.
Right.
Yep. Sit there.
Yeah.
Some of those ones where you just have a. City. But they have to do it.
Yeah.
Do it. And we appreciate that they do, and I make a motion that we adopt the resolution twenty twenty four dash oh one dash zero six. Precinct election official. Zero, it's like precinct election official compensation.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Getting there. We're getting there.
Just in place on file, the greater annual annual report.
So the total revenue was twenty three million seven hundred twenty five thousand four hundred, am I looking at that right? Yeah, and then expense. Twenty two million seven hundred seventy one thousand seven hundred ninety nine dollars. Wow.
And then the cash on hand is fifteen million and eight thirty seven seven two one.
Okay, there you go, okay, I will make the motion to accept this treasurer's semi annual report.
And basically, this this doesn't mean all that money went to Humboldt County, like the driver's license deposits. That's most of that goes to your state, I just didn't want people, oh, coming to a million dollars.
Yeah.
Goes through the, it goes through the county.
Yeah, so isn't it like we get like three dollars, or I mean, it's some.
I get seven dollars.
Three to seven?
Driver's license fee, I think is what they collect in the county. It's very, it's very little.
I know that's one of the objectives on the legislative thing for the ISAC is to try to get that so that there's more.
I mean, we do all the work.
We do all the work, the state reeks the benefit, yeah, from it, so I know there's there's actually. Whether or not that'll happen, get any traction, I have no idea.
We have two hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred and seventy two dollars and seventy one cents being paid to the state.
I'll second Sandy's motion.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All favorites? All carried. Okay, back to resolution. Twenty twenty four oh one dash oh seven, leasing moratorium in Humboldt County.
I went up and talked to John about this, um, to ensure, you know, because we had that question last week, whether or not we could. He said that yes, we could do that, um, it's good that we noted in there that we're waiting for the, um. Uh, where's that at, here, the zoning and planning commission in the board to. To do that, and once we get that stated, then we'll, isn't like we're totally, it it says here for a period of one year. Or until the current, or until the current, or until the process of creating a new Humboldt. Um comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance.
You're you're on the right.
I just had to find the right place in the right paragraph, I couldn't find it there, um, so, yeah, so he's fine with that. As as printed, so I will make that motion to um accept the resolution twenty twenty four dash one dash oh seven.
I'll second Sandy's motion.
Yeah.
So the new comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance is better.
Basically, basically, it covers.
One.
Commercial pipelines, solar farms, anything large.
Correct.
It doesn't affect private.
No.
Stuff, I just wanted to make that clear out there.
Right, right, no, it just, yeah. Commercial, yep.
It's a good thing to get down to and get that plan in place.
I agree.
And unfortunately, it's been in the works for a long time.
Too long.
Too long.
In their fucking way, Ed.
Yeah.
Yeah, we probably better do.
Roll call on it. Roll call. Eric, hi, Rick, hi, Ruth.
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
Hi. All eyes. Okay, now we're down to. Meeting reports. Get down that far? Good, huh? It's a lot of paper to get down in an hour.
Oh, let's see. Last meeting, this, we could go tomorrow, and I guess that's, let me just double check. Makes sense, and I didn't have any extracurricular needs.
I had no county meetings this week.
Nor did I.
On December twenty seventh, I had another Iowa workforce development meeting with our D P O N C board. Trying to figure out, I know, it's it's hilarious, we did have a good discussion and everything, but it's. We're still waiting on some legal. Just to make sure that what we're doing is the right, right thing to do, because we're trying to get it to um off. Use the offset money, which is, it's kind of, but anyway, otherwise, if they don't accept that offset money, then each county is going to have to come up with. Um, one thousand eight hundred and thirty three dollars and thirty three cents. So, yeah. We're hoping that that'll work.
Anything else?
That's, no, I'm sorry, that was it, that's all I had.
That's it.
That's it.
I had nothing.
I'll make a motion to move into drainage, son.
Second. All favor?
Hi.
Oh, we are in drainage. E D eighty, branch D tile improvement. Did y'all come in?
And before, I was meant to, before we got, when the greatest, well, this, um, tomorrow, the third is com- um, compensation board meeting. At one thirty. If anybody wants to. Wednesday, or at one thirty.
That's it here.
Where, yes, in the boardroom, yes, you're in the boardroom.
They, basically, if you do it again, just sit and listen.
Tomorrow is just sit and listen.
Hello.
Hello.
Everybody, this is Shelley. Sandy, Dave, Sandy Lonnie, Dave Lee, Eric Underberg, Rick Peterson, and Bruce Reitwist.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome to the.
R E N K. Okay, it is. And I don't have that sheet, Trish, what's, because I don't know if I put that on there.
Like Jacob.
Oh, congratulations, Colin.
Did he get it before tax deduction?
He got it right before the New Year's.
My brother was a New Year's baby. Yep, that was when they had the two hospitals in Fort Dodge, and mom missed it by two minutes.
Mercy, yeah, it was when they had the old mercy, and then it was. Yeah. So she didn't get the prize.
He didn't get the tax deduction.
Yeah.
So yeah, that classification will just do the, um, give you an idea. The benefit and cost for this specific area.
Yes, um, this is requested from the city, if you go to city and the. Community school districts, because they will be the two largest contributors to this project. And they like, probably like to spend that money over several years so they can put it in their budget planning. And it, the only way it would be wasted money is this project got, uh, what is it for? Re- remaster. Yeah, if it did not go through, which it's highly, highly unlikely that this project would get turned down. So this is something that would be done after the project, but we're doing it before the project so they can get. It in their budgets for the coming years. We've done this previously in other projects, and it's actually kind of nice so that people know before the project even starts with their management ready.
With all that, the synopsis, Rick, I make a motion that we appoint Jacobson Westergaard and Associates to prepare the preclassification. The lands, post improvement project number E two three zero nine four, which is the tile improvement in Dakota City here.
I'll have a second.
I'll make that second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All carried. Anything else for drainage?
There is not.
Nothing.
Have we had as much, uh, going on out in the repairs or?
Not really, they've turned in a lot that they've completed, um.
I didn't know if they were still active, I mean, when we had that rain over. The Christmas, it's the first time. That we've seen water actually coming out of tiles still at this time of year, and I didn't know if we had any work that was still being done or pretty much.
And I hadn't heard of anybody through that little time period, we haven't had any calls or anything, but um, they're kind of getting, just finishing up, they. Everybody's basically turned in the majority of their work orders, so I think we're at the tail end of.
Overall, it's a county, I tell you, we go back four or five years ago, is, or we used to have a huge, like, three pages of work orders.
Yeah.
And we have really gotten good at getting caught up on some of, I mean, some of them sat out there seven years.
Long time now.
I think after we got after them to get them turned in, if you, you know.
Well, if they don't do them, we I, we put a year of moratorium from the time you get a work order to complete the work.
Otherwise, we give it to somebody else.
Without just cause.
For a dry day, it's a rainy day.
Right, well, the first year I was on the board, it was, it was a very, very wet, and it's just been dry since then.
So they got a lot of work done, I mean, a lot of it's due to the dry conditions.
Sometime when you have time, since it's beginning of the new year, would you give a list of all the work orders that's outstanding?
Yes.
Board, right?
Yep.
Shelley, you have any previous experience in drainage?
No.
Never laid any tile?
So what was your experience before? I worked at egg parts.
Oh, okay.
In the office.
Well, Carrie, we'll teach you everything you need to know.
Yes, you've done a good job.
Unfortunately, you'll never know everything, because there's always something different in drainage.
Yeah, there really is.
Well, the easiest thing to remember is, if you don't know, you tell them, I'll find out, because sometimes they can be a little persistent at being a pain in the. So it's, just, I'll find out, I'll do my best.
I'll let you know, just follow up.
And we might have to call an engineer and call.
Lawyer.
A lawyer to figure out what our steps are, so that's the point.
Yeah, there's always somebody to get in touch with to help.
If you got a good drainage project, you might go out and take a look at it, just so you know what they're talking about.
Right, yeah. That is a good idea.
Anything else in drainage?
I'll make that motion, and I have, we got a drainage.
Second.
Any other discussion, all in favor? All carried, we're back in session. Anything else to come for the board?
So next Monday, we are having our meeting, and then we are going to have a work session.
Yeah.
Budget.
Budget work session, correct.
I'm just making sure, so I clear my schedule.
Apartment review budgets.
Yep.
And like I commented earlier, Denise Ballard, thought we're gonna be under five, but she says plan for eight, because there was a huge claim at the end of the year. In some city or county, so she didn't know how that was gonna affect our numbers. Sometimes you get a premature baby born or something like that, and all of a sudden, you got a lot, it can change, but. Thankfully, we got a large group, so we can absorb that, and it doesn't bump it up too much.
That's good, yeah, the bigger the pool, the better it is.
Yeah, healthier the pool.
Right.
Are you going to that meeting?
Yes, I am, I'm signed up, I believe I'm signed up, maybe I'm not signed up, but I did talk to Denise, but maybe you should double check, make sure I'm signed up. I do have my room reserved, so, that is the eighth of February. It's right the afternoon of the, uh. Morning, the morning at Embassy Suites.
And that is the someday of a meeting. There's nothing better than doing some good digging in that insurance.
Oh, yeah.
Like when an agent wants to come over and go through your policy.
Yeah.
You know, I I I've been in it long enough, I actually find it kind of interesting now.
It is.
Well, you probably do.
I mean, it's it's scary to say that, but. Sometimes they get them guys from Walmart, or they buy these things, and it's, oh my God, you're kidding me.
Yep.
Well, if there's nothing else.
Okay, I will make the motion.
I'm second.
Any other discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
Nine twenty. Thirty seven.